Well, let's go ahead and start our work session meeting this evening for Monday, June 6th. First item on the agenda tonight is the amendment to the Unified Development Code as we had asked to be set aside until we could discuss it at a work session. So, James?
Thank you, sir, and I will immediately turn it over to James. Oh, and welcome back, everybody, after a nice little vacation period.
All right, well, thank you. As the mayor indicated, a few weeks ago at your May 9 council meeting, we counsel tabled consideration of Bill 3166, the Property Maintenance Code amendments, to have further discussion at the work session. And just to quickly go through what that bill proposed, there were really two specific amendments. One was dealing with maintenance of driveway approaches. So, we were attempting in the Property Maintenance Code to give a clear definition of driveway and driveway approach, and then to state to the reader of the Property Maintenance Code that driveway approaches are the responsibility of the private property owner. It's always been administrative force that way. It just wasn't as clear as what we thought it could have been in the code. So, we wanted to make it very clear that the driveway and the driveway approach are the responsibility of the property owner. That does go for both residential and commercial. The driveway approach is really defined as that area that's in the right-of-way, but between, it connects the driveway and the street. What's important about definition of street is the street is not only the pavement of the roadway, it's also the curb of the roadway. So, the approach is only from the edge of the curb to the actual driveway and private property. Curb and the street are the responsibility of the city to maintain, always has been and will continue to be. And that's, that again is the case for both residential and commercial properties. If a, if a property does not have a curb line, we have some situations where the driveway approach actually will go all the way out to the pavement edge of the street, that that is the area that the property owner must maintain, all the way out to the pavement edge. So, that was the, we are trying to, again, just make that clarification regarding driveways. It's not that we've had an issue with enforcement, when we've had to have, in a few instances, commercial property owners maintain their approaches, they've, they've always done so. We've defined the area that needs to be maintained, whether it had potholes or just simply needed to be reconstructed. They have done that, but we just thought to the reader of the code, it should be very clear, the distinction of responsibility. And then the Second Amendment that we had with the Property Maintenance Code really dealt with the discharge of storm water. We had an incident last year in the wintertime. It was kind of a unique situation, but we had a property owner that was discharging water onto their property, but in effect, it was leaving their property, getting onto a neighbor's driveway, this is commercial area, on a commercial driveway, and running out to 58 Highway. This was the section of 58 Highway at the curve on North Madison Street, where we had a business that was creating a real problem with the discharge of storm water getting out into 58 Highway and creating a real icy condition. Because of that, the, the winter we had, you know, we would have warm days, the ice would go away, then it would quickly refreeze one night. We needed to try to, we need to find a solution on where they're discharging the storm water. What we're trying to do with this particular code is, again, you know, when that situation arose, we, we looked to see, are they violating the code in some way? And this is typical when we identify a concern. And our concern was having something in the code that allowed us to, if the property owner wasn't willing to correct it, to, if he would, actually force the property owner to correct it and find another discharge point of the property. So, what we utilized with this particular amendment is adding the, adding the terminology, were, if it's an intentional discharge of storm water. Sometimes your property may slope naturally, and that's just where the water's going to flow. I think we all understand that. But with some pump discharges, sometimes, if you intentionally discharge that, where it creates a problem, that's what we're trying to alleviate. So, as indicated in the staff report, you know, we always work with property owners. It's, it's a very rare problem that we have, sometimes in residential properties, we have property owners that need to find alternative solutions to where they can discharge water, but we, we have some good success with that. We just wanted, again, have the tool and the code that allowed us to, if we needed to do it, to have an enforceable action on the property. So, those were the amendments we're proposing this year in the Property Maintenance Code. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Catterett, for the explanation of what you're trying to do here. For the first part, I've read through that, and I've, I've come up with the, the same synopsis that you've given out there, you know, that what the difference is, is making it more clear as far as what the approach is. I don't have any problem with that. I think it's wise that we do specify what that is. That way, it is clear to the property owner, the developer, whoever it is. That way, it's all in the up and up and out front, and it's well-defined. For the second part, as far as the water discharge, and I appreciate, the last time we had this discussion, I had Mr. Zur explained to us that it was, and I'm going to paraphrase, but I'll, I'll refer to, back to Jonathan also, if I do get this wrong. Not so much the infraction of discharging water into the street or on a sidewalk is a violation, but the cause and effect of a safety hazard is, am I correct?
I, I, yes, I think you are absolutely correct on that one. The analysis would be, you're not cycling it, or you're not focusing on a particular direction at that particular point. The question is going to be whether or not there's pooling at a location that's going to cause a slipping hazard for individuals.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm at with this, is that it's, in many cases, what, I think what we're dealing with here is, and I think, kind of the extreme unforeseen thing that, that happens, and it's unpreventable in many cases, but in the case that it does happen, whether it be ice, mud, wet leaves, or wet grass, algae, anything that, that could be a, an effect of the cause, that, tell me if I'm right, that goes back to the responsibility of the property owner to remedy? Is, is that what this is, the, the intent of this is? Is, that's where I'm trying to get, to get that question answered. Is that the intent of what we're trying to do here tonight?
Absolutely is. Yeah, that, that is what we are, we are concerned with, when we have a situation that's created, whether it's on a sidewalk right-of-way or street right-of-way, so it could be hazardous to either pedestrians walking or biking on the sidewalk, or the streets. And it's not just in the wintertime. In the summertime, we do have sprinkler systems that run constantly that perhaps create, you know, an algae situation on the sidewalk, make it very slippery, or somebody mowing and not clearing off the sidewalk and grass accumulating over time and creating a slippery situation. So, that is what we're trying to address with this. If the compound, the addition of water is creating the situation, and it's an intentional discharge, that is what we're trying to alleviate.
Mr. Stevens?
As a matter of fact, we had a situation like that on Fox Ridge and Lucy Webb that we took care of. Somebody had to break their arm first before they did it, but...
It's a good example, but it is what happened. We had algae situation there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question about, there are really two types of driveways that we're talking about, because out in four, you've got J, you've got Hubach, and you've got 58. And none of those can really apply to this, because we've got problems with the driveways. And I don't know how many of you have come out, I've already talked to Mr. Fearborn about it, but on J and 58, at that intersection there, that's growing up in trees, and that is dreadful. And you need to make sure that you've got something in the code that covers that. I know that it is state highway-controlled and owned, but it still is a part of Raymore, and it looks terrible when you're driving down that area. So, if you haven't seen it, take a look at it, because there's, I think they're cottonwoods, and you know how they are this time of year, and there's about 10 or 12 of them growing up in that ditch.
Yeah. Mr. Moorehead?
So, I wanted to make sure that, that what we're talking about here does not impact either Hubach, J, or 58, because there's...
Go ahead, Derek. Mr. Catterett, I didn't have a chance to look at the entirety of the Property Maintenance Code, but when I, I look at the inset, that proposed definition, the, the concern that I had was that people who are, I guess, homeowners trying to look at this, could be confused still with the idea of, because there's, the sentence there doesn't mention curb. Now, the three sentences afterward in the paragraph give a fantastic definition. Is, is curb independently defined in the code? I noticed in the third sentence, it starts "the street and associated curb." Well, to me, in the one-sentence proposed definition, why couldn't it be that provides transition from the street and associated curb to the driveway, only for fear that citizens may look at that and still be going, "Does my curb apply," or "Does the curb apply?" Or offer some note that, like in italics, that offers the second sentence, "Curb is a part of, of the street and not a part of the driveway and driveway approach." What are your thoughts?
Yeah, it is not clearly a definition. So, we would, if you, for clarification, we could add it within the, the text of the code amendment that we're proposing would be best, because we don't have that separate definition. That's how we, you know, how we eternally define, "Street includes curb line," but to the reader, perhaps, it's not as clear as it could be.
Thank you. Mr. Kellaw?
On line of that, because that's always been a question, but I, I guess I'm assuming, but thank you for the, the comments, because now you're making me think. You don't assume anything. The curb line, where we generally define a curb that's not in front of the driveway, and I, I wish I had a whiteboard that I could write on, a continual line from curb to curb crossing over that driveway, okay, I'm trying to describe as well as I can, that eight, 10 inches that continually runs in a continual straight line, is that a curb also in front of the driveway? Just for my own clarification.
Maybe I, I may not be clear on the question.
I am, yes.
Thank you, thank you. And I, I'm reluctant to draw anything, because people at home can't see it, but I, I could...
The roll curb, as it exists at the end of the driveway, is part of the street. The driveway ends where the roll starts. The roll becomes part of the street.
Okay.
That's why the driveway approaches, you'll remember last year, we started addressing those at the recommendation of our public works staff, where we're repairing those as part of our curb program. They are considered the curb. Now, there are some driveways that, the old-fashioned way, the driveway runs all the way down as a linear driveway to the street. In that case, there is no curb. The driveway actually hits the asphalt with no roll and no apparent curb. In that case, the apron of the driveway, and in fact, that's what exists with, with most commercial areas, where that entire drive is part of the driveway apron, touches the asphalt, they would be responsible up to the asphalt.
And that example exists right by where I walked tonight, and I've walked by it many times, so that the, the middle school at, at Eagle Glen Middle School, it goes right out into the street. There is no expansion line, no cut kerf, there, it just goes from their, their driveway, their apron, right out to the, the paved surface, so, I mean...
And if I could speak for Jim Catterett, and I am, I guess, right now, the, the, that is actually what caused this, was some of our commercial businesses asking, "How far out are we responsible, and where does this, the city take over?" And a, a good example of that, they were actually very good neighbors about it, was Mazuma Credit Union, because they had a whole lot of deterioration right on the end of their apron, which flattened out into the street itself, and they took care of it very well.
Anyone else? Frankly, Chief Zimmerman and I dealt with that for jurisdictional purposes, for accidents, on what's public right-of-way and what's private property, and it's pretty much the same definition as you just described, with regard to what the point of impact would be for an accident, whether it's a private property accident or a public right-of-way accident. Yeah? Jay?
Thank you, sir. I apologize for my tardiness. Mr. Catterett, I was the one who made the motion to table last week, as Councilmember Morehead and Councilmember Kellaw clearly had additional questions, and maybe some of the rest of the council, as I do too. I think you've answered them, but I'd like to just check for clarification. I know you hate it when I use that term. The first one is the discharge of water, to me, clearly has two parts to it. The discharge of water, and then part B would be creating the hazardous condition. So, if I wash my car in my drive and I discharge water, that's part A, but I never come close to part B unless I'm doing it over an eight-day period continuously and I get the algae buildup. That's correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And again, it's, we're focusing limited on the word intentional discharge, because sometimes there's natural discharge that, there's just no way to change that flow. But intentionally discharging it, such as from a sub-pump...
That makes sense, yes. The, the second one was, and it's not addressed in here, maybe, again, I apologize, Councilmember Morehead, I'm in the same boat, I did not review the entire code prior to this one, but one that kind of got my attention last time was the grass or weeds growing up between the cracks. I can certainly, I, I was just curious if we had a, a threshold on that, if you will. I mean, certainly, if, you know, every crack is filled with six-inch weeds, that's pretty obvious blatant violation, but most people that have got an established driveway, anywhere you've got, you know, a separation of the materials, over time, you get some sediment buildup, and, and weeds are pretty good about growing up. I mean, at any given time, just this pure definition, you would probably get me a couple of times a year. I mean, I try to get to them, but I was just curious if we have a, a definition beyond that, or if it's just a reasonableness standard.
It's a reasonable standard, one that doesn't come up on residential properties, honestly. We just haven't gotten into that area, we haven't needed to get into that area of enforcement. Commercial properties, a little differently, if we have degrading parking lots, where, you know, the sub-bays and the bays are just gone, and you have a lot of, you know, situation where you have grass and weeds coming through, but it's really only on commercial properties. And again, because the newness of most of our developments, that hasn't been an issue yet for us either.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kellaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to comment on that. Out of real-world experience, and, and what happens in actual everyday occurrences, you know, even my driveway, believe it or not, I've got crabgrass coming up through the cracks in my, through the expansion joints, you know, and as much as I hate crabgrass, but it does happen. What's, what's actually important about that is that if a weed is to come up between a expansion joint or a small crack, it's only going to grow as far as that, that root will allow it to go down. Now, if a weed is allowed, is able to grow up six, eight, 10 inches, that, that's indicative that there's a bigger problem than just, you know, the sand and the grit getting down in that, that crack, because as, as soon as you get that accumulation of sand grit in that, alls it takes is a, is a seed to germinate, and it will grow in that. So, you know, I, I, I remember that discussion very well, and, and that, that did bring up some concerns for me, but after sitting there thinking about it in realistic terms, is that, you know, if vegetation is able to grow that far, there's, there's, it's indicative that there is a problem deeper down and wider than, than what's visible. So, that's what I got to add.
Anything else? If not, everybody okay with it coming back to the agenda? Okay. All right. What do we got next, James? I see we have a...
Yes, well, Mr. Catterett? For this particular section, Mr. Catterett will be introducing three items that Councilmember Stevens had concerns with, and then Councilmember Stevens will take it from there.
Okay.
All right, well, subsequent to the council meeting back on May 9th, Councilmember Stevens, Mr. Fearborn and I did sit down and discuss a, a couple of items that he had identified regarding property maintenance in general. So, I've kind of outlined them briefly here. Mr. Stevens provided some photographs to show some examples of the areas that he wanted to have considered this evening. So, the first item dealt with addressing concrete and debris piles on undeveloped lots. Specifically, what we've had in our developing subdivisions over the years is oftentimes, we have areas, undeveloped land, that, you know, become either temporary, or sometimes longer than temporary, areas where either concrete that has been poured and, and removed because it failed in some manner, or other debris piles left, rock, stone, et cetera, that typically find their way to the end of maybe one of the dead-end streets that are going to be extended in the future for development. There's a specific pile that Mr. Stevens had identified in the Timber Trail subdivision at the end of Sequoia Drive, and I'm familiar with this particular concrete pile. It, it was formed early on in the Timber Trail subdivision development. It's just, hey, it's just existed over the years. I don't know that it's grown in size, but it was a little bit of a dumping ground early on in the subdivision phase. Of course, when Timber Trails first came in, we all fully expected that that subdivision was going to take off, and Sequoia Drive was going to be extended, and the phase was going to kind of take care of the problem on its own. But these concrete piles, again, they, they do not, do not just occur by the property owner, they, they're really illegal dumping grounds is what's happening, whether individual builders, or sometimes even homeowners in the subdivision are adding to these specific piles. So, we kind of go through the city and identified where these were, and, and start asking a few questions. I think they're important to note, you know, are these concrete piles a violation of city code? Yes, they are. We, we have specific code dealing with rock, debris, dirt, stone piles that are left on undeveloped lots. Very rare, if ever, does a property owner themselves create the debris pile, usually, again, as due to home construction occurring in the subdivision. Very rarely, if ever, would we know who created it. Again, they're illegal dumped, dumping areas, so we don't know who's creating these debris piles. Most of our construction, our subdivisions with construction activity, we have multiple builders and subcontractors doing work, so we never are able to identify who's doing the dumping. But is it the responsibility of the property owner? Unfortunately, yes, it is. And so, we have a lot of, if you would, innocent property owners that are, that are, have property that they, that they own, but they don't necessarily have eyes on all the time, and, and so, we have this dumping occurring. Oftentimes, it gets cleaned up on its own, because again, as these subdivisions are developing and roads are extended, the, they get cleaned up at that point in time. It's, it's some of our subdivisions, Timber Trails, Madison Creek, as an example, that have been slower in developing, where these piles just sit there. We don't get complaints on these, on these debris piles. It's, I can't tell you if I've gotten a complaint on any of the debris piles that I just referenced. The only one is a specific rock pile in Shadowwood subdivision, that I know Councilmember Doug Wagon is very familiar with, where they actually use some of the rock and stone that they've dug up on that particular property for landscaping features. I've actually gotten a couple of complaints on that, but again, it's an active building site, they're using the material on-site, they're just dockpiling and storing it. That would be the only one. So, these other piles, we know they exist, they are a violation of city code, but we have not been aggressive in trying to get them cleaned up. If trash, like household trash gets dumped there, sometimes people just dispose of bags, we'll take care of that immediately. We don't want any kind of attraction for animals, et cetera, food attraction, those kind of things. But the debris and rock piles, they are there, they, they are an eyesore. I mean, you've identified it, you spotted it just driving through the subdivision. So, we're just, on this particular item, looking for a direction on how aggressive you want staff to be to remedy these particular situations. And I'll just roll through them, is that how we want to...
Let's talk about it a little bit. Jeff, did you have anything to add to that?
Just for council, if they want to get rid of it, or if they want to wait until they are gotten rid of when the thing, when the rest of the property gets developed? And also, if we want to strengthen an ordinance, and maybe even be a little more, we check them out a little bit better, so that's just, it doesn't build up and happen again, otherwise. Anyway.
Mr. Morehead?
Mr. Catterett, help me out here, because this is private property, so when I hear the phrase "innocent property owner," I mean, this is, this is a person who owns property, it's their burden to monitor their property. Mr. Zur can attest to private property rights and duties and obligations also, so if somebody is illegally dumping, the property owner has a burden to do something about that, and can approach the city and notify the city that people are doing that. But if people have left property in any disarray, be it a developed lot, undeveloped lot, and they allow that property to become a nuisance, we already have a vehicle to address that. If I'm interpreting it right, and I'm hoping you'll help on this, because, I mean, Councilmember Burke and I have property at Brookside in Bristol, where the, the Brookside, the next plat that is expected, they've left a lot of debris, but it was the, to the extent that there was rebar sticking out where kids could get skewered while riding bikes, it was, there were wild animals growing out of this, and this was within only a few feet of property lines. I know that's been extended back, and the city's dealt with some of that, but really, don't we already kind of have a vehicle to address that? If, if this is a nuisance, we can ticket them for a nuisance. Help me out in my, in my two-off base.
You are correct, and I, I did want to make that statement, that we have the code in place to address debris piles, rock piles, situations like the rebar, the, the, the work that was started but not completed in the Brookside subdivision. There are codes in place, it's the level of active enforcement that we want to take for some of these activities. Certainly, we don't want a dangerous situation to, to remain. But again, some of these piles are, are done by illegal dumping when a contractor moves in, but then they just get added to as the months go by by property owners in the subdivision, and others that are just trying to find a place to get rid of some extra soil or dirt that they have. Is it creating a unsafe situation? Most of them, no. Can it be unsightly, because you can't mow it anymore? Yes. Are we getting complaints? No, not on any of them. I have not, we have not received any complaints on these piles. That's my point, is what level of enforcement do you want to, you want us to go to?
Go ahead, Jeff.
No, I had to correct you on that. We did get some complaints down there on Cryzel from one woman, and she was pretty bitter about it. It had to do with piles and all the grass mowing and whatnot. So, I've, I've heard from her a couple of times. She hasn't filed any legitimate complaints, like for a police report or anything, but she has made complaints.
Mr. Kellaw, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I guess I'll start with this. Concrete, as far as I'm concerned, concrete is debris, you know, and I'm, I'm having kind of a difficult time defining natural rock as debris, as much as I despise digging rocks out of my yard. It's natural. That's the way Missouri is, you know, but the concrete that I've dug out of my yard and that I see laying around, different developments and that, that's discarded debris, you know, and I, my opinion is, is that that needs to be disposed of, just like all other construction debris, you know? It's, it's not naturally occurring, you know? God didn't put it there. We, humans, created it, you know? We left it there, we didn't take it away. So, I, I guess that, that's where my dilemma is, you know, and I'm leaving this open for more discussion, because, you know, I understand, and I sympathize, and I see the problem with having a huge rock pile, you know, and I, I even remember Mrs. Hubach, she absolutely hates rock detention ponds, hates them, okay, there's no doubt about that. But how do we differentiate between that and somebody putting their rocks in, in what they, they're ultimately going to say, "Well, that's my landscaping," you know? Art and beauty is in the eye of the beholder, you know? How do we differentiate between that? Those are the questions I'm, I'm going to pose, you know? That's not including the, the concrete, because I'm not going to waiver on that. That's debris. That's, I, you know, and I'm not going to throw, I'm not going to throw rocks, no pun intended, at, at staff, but, you know, I, they've definitely heard the, the complaint, the, the concern, and they're going to be watching further on down the road, which is more than, I don't want to say more than I can expect, but I, I'm very appreciative of it, so, anyway.
Anybody else? Mr. Fearborn? Mr. Feubert?
I think the direction that staff is looking for is twofold. One, on these areas where the debris that is on the property wasn't put there by the current owner of the property, does the council want to entertain any component where the city would actually voluntarily go on and pull it? I think we're getting a clear signal, no, that the city is not going to do that, that it is the responsibility of the owner of the property, regardless of the fact that it may not be their fault that it got there because it's been illegally dumped.
But the problem could be that if you, if you don't do that, and they refuse to abate the issue, who abates it? Who takes care of it at that point? With proper notification, can't the city go ahead and abate the problem and bill the property owner?
Absolutely, and that leads to the second component of this. Would the council like to see a more aggressive timeframe in actually citing the owner, sending notice of the citation, and then if they don't do it, we go on, we abate it, and we bill them, just like any other nuisance on a property.
Ms. Abdoong.
I'll offer my two cents. It seems to me like this isn't a change in code, which you guys already said, but more a request for enforcement. In my opinion, if we have no one complaining or only one person complaining about one area other than the other area that we're already aware of and have talked to the developer about, it seems that there's, this isn't a situation where there's any danger of people involved. From what Mr. Catterett said, it seems like part of, some of these are kind of a natural part of development of a subdivision, it just kind of naturally happens on the undeveloped property, and the development has stalled, so it's remained for some time. In my opinion, while it might not be pretty to look at, I wouldn't consider it a nuisance, and I thought it was an important point that staff made in our packet, talking about how if we make them clean up, some of the areas are owned by homeowners associations, so the homeowners association will be responsible for cleaning it up. If they don't, then the city cleans up and bills them, and it's quite likely that some of these new homeowners associations aren't going to be able to pay the city back for that. So, it seems a little, seems a little micromanag-y and out of bounds, in my opinion, for us to do this. This isn't someone's front yard that we're talking about, a pile of concrete and, you know, that I'm putting in my front yard, like my house is there and I just have trash in my yard. This is undeveloped land.
Mr. Barber.
Thank you. This is a tough one because, to me, the debris on the property, what's the difference in these, this concrete than letting the grass grow three feet high? You know, if the grass grows three feet high, we're going to intervene, we're going to mow it, we're going to charge the homeowners. To me, that's the same issue. But then I agree with Sonya here too, that, you know, if nobody's complaining, I mean, it is a cost to remove it. I guess I had a question, does the city have a place, like the back of Hawk Ridge Dam or someplace, that some of this stuff could go and be used? That might be a way on some of this stuff, you know, the legacy stuff that we have here, that we might be able to kind of, you know, work both sides of it, get rid of it, not have a high cost factor, and then we could just start holding people's feet to the fire no more, you know, this is just like grass or anything else. Because I think when somebody looks at our city, when a developer comes in and looks at a piece of property, I think this kind of stuff, they look at that and say, I don't know if I want to develop here, you know, if they allow that kind of, it's trash. I mean, really, it's what it is, it's trash, it's construction trash. So, that's my two cents.
Derek, did you have something?
One, I think we have to be careful, we, when we get into a determination of whether something was innocently or somebody else dumped it on that property, we're not in a position to determine it. That's the homeowner, and that's their business, that's their property, so we should not be in the business of passing that level of judgment. But I will say, you know, War II, we dealt with this problem just last year. We had a developer in this town that was building and developing, but he had a property over on Sunset, and he was using that as his storage lot for his materials, and it was horrible, it was unsightly, it was noisy, it was dangerous. When I pulled up to take pictures of it, the grass was taller than the roof of my car, and there were snakes living in that, and that was, you know, quote, during the process of his development of other properties. And so, I want to be careful. A nuisance is a nuisance, it doesn't matter whether it's intentional, accidental, you own the property, you are responsible for the property. Homeowners, homeowners own this property, you know, I have a lake down here that I don't want to dredge, but after almost forty years, we're all getting a special assessment because it is our property, we own it, we have to maintain it. If there's, if the developer and a homes association abandons property there, it is the homeowner's property, and they all own homes, so they technically do have the money to pay for it. They may not want to pay for it, and it may be, you know, awkward, but it is still available. I still think this is a property ownership issue, I think we have means in place that regulate that. Yes, I think we should enforce it, no different than we do with any other property nuisance.
Mr. Kellogg?
Couple points. I agree that, I believe this is a private property issue, even if it was there before somebody bought the property, they bought the property knowing it was there, you know, that's where I have a hard time getting over that, you know, so it kind of removes that innocence, you know, I, yeah, I'm sympathetic with them, yes, absolutely, because they, they're buying a dump, you know, I don't want to call it a dump, I don't want to call anything in Raymore a dump, but if that's what it's being used for, that's what it Then, also, is that, you know, and I totally respect the opinions and the things that are said, and I'm evaluating them, and I, what I say, I say in the utmost respect, is that I'm having a tough time buying into that if nobody complains that there isn't an issue. I'm going to revert back to just a few months back when I passionately argued against, you know, billing private property owners for the ADA ramps. Nobody complained about those. Nobody complained about those. If they did, it was maybe one. But, we as a council said we were still going to go ahead and bill those property owners. So, I'm having a hard time using the argument one time but not using the same standard of judgment the second time. That's my opinion on that.
Ms. Hubach.
To me, the issue is very simple. Are we going to be a so-so community or are we going to be a quality community? And I have complained for years in front of the planning and zoning and some of the other departments that we use the lowest common denominator when we're talking about on our streets and our subdivisions, and if we're going to attract quality, you have to demonstrate that there's quality there. And we do not want Raymore to become downtrodden just because nobody complained about it. Over, Mr. Mayor, in your area, wherever Danny has a house, they asked me to do something about it, and I did, and we got it taken care of it because you all had trash that was there and rock debris and everything, nothing was being done, and it was just an empty lot. We do not have to accept it. We as city council members, it seems to me, we have an obligation. If we see something going on in our neighborhood that we don't think is proper, we have an obligation to speak up. It doesn't make any difference if anybody else has complained or not. We are supposed to be guardians of the area, and we're supposed to make that decision. And so, I am in favor of going full steam ahead and doing everything that we possibly can as long as we don't interfere with private property rights.
Mr. Stevens.
I agree with that. Also, we're known as a clean town, so that people who want to come in and develop, that's important. If you want to see what a town looks like that does, doesn't take care of their stuff, you can go to almost any small town in Cass County and see what the result of that is.
As I used to tell my officers, we want to be aggressive, but we want to be cooperative as well, and compassionate, that's right. Aggressive but compassionate. Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Passion doesn't come in.
I just want to be clear, there's a great disparity, different levels of what we're talking about. Concrete, clearly a violation. The bigger issue to me is we, most of these piles are just obvious concrete slabs that have been dumped there. They're a mixture of natural materials, dirt piles mixed in with rock, mixed in with stone, that you wouldn't have spread out over your property or used necessarily maybe even as backfill, but it's just waste material that's got to go somewhere. We have a varying level of small piles, bigger piles. This is not an isolated problem in the city, and it's not isolated to Raymore by any stretch of it. This is, this is a common occurrence in any developing community where we have undeveloped land areas that's used as either temporary, as I stated, or can become longer than temporary if development slows down, they're just storage areas. You don't see them in our finished subdivisions, you see them in our developing subdivisions, and I've just tried to get a handle on if we want to be aggressive, so what level, I mean, there's, very subjective, what level do we go down to, you know, as far as maintenance of these, and we're touching a lot of individuals. If we didn't get complaints before, we're going to get them now, if we enforce it to the level that I'm hearing this evening. That's all, that's what I'm running through my mind as the enforcer of this code, is it's such a fine line, and I don't want to make a big deal, I understand that, I don't call us a complaint-driven department, if we see a violation, we go after that violation. It's a lot different to tell somebody to mow their violation of weeds than it is a violation of an illegal dump that's occurred on their property, that's very expensive and difficult to get rid of. I'm just trying to weigh that, you know, in my own mind, and when I say we're not getting complaints, that's the dilemma that I'm stuck in. We know they're there, we've just kind of, we know development is occurring, sometimes it's slower than what it is, but this situation touches every one of our developing subdivisions, so we've got a lot of notifications to set down.
Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would add into that is that I completely appreciate that, and I sympathize, and I know exactly what you're saying, I really do, but from a councilman's point and my responsibilities is that I would love to have a place to throw all of those rocks that I dig out of my yard when I plant a quince or azalea or any of my flowers. I dig them all the time, I wish I had a place to throw them, but I don't. Now, that's because I have a sense of responsibility, you know, that I can't just go throw those in the pile that's down there on Sequoia. I know it's there, I know it's there, but the old Kevin Kellogg, twenty years ago, when it says, well, everybody else is doing it, I'll go ahead and do it too. So, you know, that's kind of the mentality, I think, that is, I don't want to say pervasive, but it's common, you know, they say, well, it's there, I'm just, you know, this isn't going to hurt anything, we'll just add to it. Well, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and that's my concern with it. That's my biggest concern, is that we've got it, and if we turn a blind eye to it, we're somewhat condoning it and enabling it to grow.
Mr. Burke.
Last year, pretty much one of the first things I did after I was elected was deal with the end of Bristol in Brookside, and, yeah, it was a lot of work to get things done, but eventually, it got cleaned up in a way that was a lot better. It's not perfect by any means. The one thing I wanted to bring up though is, in the stream there, there is what appears to be a partially constructed bridge and with rebar and everything else, that's interesting. I don't know how they would get that out of there without doing major construction, and it would probably be just as much work to just build a bridge. But, so we definitely don't want to, we don't want to stifle development, but we don't want our developers to stifle, you know, the beauty of our town, and then hope that some bank will buy it as they maybe fall in hard times and don't develop anymore. We just have to be, we have to be careful as far as, we can't take our city staff off of all the other jobs that are going with, to deal with this, we've got to, you know, kind of go slowly and approach the biggest problems first and show that we're starting to deal with these things, and then maybe we can get some voluntary complaints once we show that the biggest problems are being dealt with.
Well, to follow on with what you just said, Joe, I think that's the direction that I'm hearing from the table here, is that let's go ahead and try for the voluntary compliance, and for those that don't assist in the beautification of those properties, then we may aggressively approach those. We might, we haven't even reached out to these people yet all that well to let them know about these abatement issues, and if we can go ahead and reach out to them now in an official capacity, maybe we can get some of those areas cleaned up, and then if there are those that continue to disregard our requests, then those are the ones we pursue aggressively. How's that sound? Everybody good with that?
Okay.
We'll proceed in that manner. We will let the council know through the community development report at council meeting for those properties, when we take that second step, because I suspect we will be taking that second step to let them know that we're going to be starting to cite because we're not seeing the voluntary compliance, and we'll let the council know at council meeting that that's about to occur, because Mr. Catterett is probably correct, you will probably get some phone calls from some folks saying either it hadn't been done before or whatever, so we want to alert you ahead of time that's going to occur.
Ms. Hubach.
Before we go into something else, I want to, I don't know whether this is part of the same problem or not, but we have, we get a lot of complaints about people mowing their grass and the grass is put into the street. They do not put the grass clippings back on the property, they put it all on the street, and we get a lot of problems with that, because that can be very dangerous and slick at times. Do we do anything about that? I see it on Jay Highway all the time.
We, I think, go ahead.
We do, if we hear about it, we immediately drive out to the property and talk with the property owner about removing it from either the sidewalk or the street if it becomes a problem. So, we do, if we know about it right of way, we will immediately go to the property, talk to the property owner about it.
Okay, so number three on the list here is identify ways to encourage home builders to incorporate universal design features. You want to move on to that next?
Thank you, sir.
So, on this one, Councilmember Stevens specifically was looking for a way to perhaps go beyond simply encouraging a home builder to incorporate some universal design components into a new home, because we're not having a lot of success on a voluntary basis on that, but perhaps looking at a way to incentivize the establishment of some universal design features as part of our Community for All Ages program. There are many things that could very easily be done to some of our new homes being constructed. If they're done at the time of construction, it's much less expensive, much more effective to build those components in early than having to make an adaptation to the home later on. So, things such as making, you know, zero entry homes, making the hallways wide enough for wheelchair accessibility, making all the doorways wide enough for wheelchair accessibility, the bathroom areas, et cetera, making supports behind the walls for grab bars in the bathroom, things that you could add to the actual integrity of the structure up front, and I believe the intent was trying to find a way, maybe we could be a leader in that area and consider some type of incentive for home builders to automatically build that within their structures. One of the things that we did, we did it through regulation, but we were without question a leader in the Kansas City area, was the radon control. We're one of the few, still the only, community in Kansas City that requires a passive radon control system in every new home, because it is truly an issue for our region, and it becomes much more expensive for a homeowner to have to add a system later on than it is to have it built in from the very beginning. So, this is just a similar situation where we're thinking ahead of aging in place, and if we have components built into our new homes, then they stand ready to be easily adapted for individuals that are going through changes in lifestyle. Again, maybe if suddenly they're confined to a wheelchair, if you can't get into Again, maybe if suddenly they're confined to a wheelchair, if you can't get into the restrooms because the doorways are too small, there's a, there's a serious issue, and it's expensive to, to adapt that after, after the fact. So just something that I believe Councilmember Stevens was looking at, some discussion of maybe finding a way to, to provide an incentive for builders to incorporate some of these features.
Mr. Stevens.
I was kinda hoping that this would be a one-time pilot project that create a market for these sort of things, that would be strictly voluntary. And I think most of the features that he mentioned, I was gonna mention as well. But it's something that I would personally be interested in myself. Seven years ago, I think I was still, had 4,000 pounds of free weights in my basement that I was working out with. A year ago, I could ride a bike, now I can't do either one. So something like this, you start thinking about what might happen, you know, later in your life, and how you can get around in your house. So I, I think it's an important thing to, to think about.
Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Stevens. And I, I agree with that, but I, I wanna add a suggestion or discussion in regards to like door whiz, and in relation to the radon, what we're talking about. It's, it's, I remember that discussion being about $750 to add the electrical outlet to the attic and the infrastructure at the, the point of the build. 750 bucks. To retrofit a house that's been built, 7,500, you know, extremely two different things. So, you know, I, I, that's why I supported that, you know, and I, I think that's good. We didn't require them to put a fan in the attic, but we required them to put an outlet in the attic, just like what we require them to put an outlet in the garage for a garage door opener. We don't require a garage door opener, but the infrastructure is there. And with that said, coming from the construction industry, many years ago, but I was a carpenter, I do know that when we built, we would look at the future uses of a space, okay? Whether it was going to be a 32-inch door, the need would be a 36-inch door, or even a revolving door. The infrastructure that is behind the drywall, behind the plaster, we would try to build that with those expansion needs in the future, so that we'd just cut out the drywall, remove a stud, and it was already there. You wouldn't have to rebuild the structure. And that's the point where I'm going, is that if we could encourage builders to look that, with that mindset when they build, you know, that they build those, the, the structural frames of the houses, the buildings, so that with that in mind, that they only have to take out, you know, a, a, a stud, and the next one is right there already in place with the header there that goes across and all of that. You don't have to use it unless it's needed. You know, that's what I think Mr. Stevens is talking about. And if I'm wrong, I, I know him well enough that he'll kick me in the, in the leg and say, you know, I'm wrong. But that kind of practices, best practices management, or whatever we wanna call it, you know, that's, I think if we could encourage that out of our builders, I'm, I'm all on board for it. But to require a builder to put in 36-inch doors when the market, you know, sustains, you know, the, the market wants a 32-inch door, you know, personally, I don't wanna live in a house with 36-inch doors. I don't wanna live in a house that has 36-inch counters in, in, in the bathroom. That's me. I may in some day, but not today, you know? But if the house is, that I bought, has the ability to be expanded economically, that, that's a win-win for everybody, in my opinion.
Mr. Morehead.
You know, this morning NPR had a great discussion about tiny homes. People living in four, about 480 square feet of a house. And what really resonated with me was, during the discussion, was people right now are, are going in a lot of different directions. And, you know, we talk about future lifestyle changes in the packet here. Well, the people determine that. And I, I guess, so I'm kinda cautious about us telling builders the direction they ought to go when builders are already going in the direction that their customers want them to go. These features are already marketed to them, that they can pick. And I, you know, just as a previous home builder, there's a lot of these design features. I mean, this could get out of control, doing houses, both cost and just the necessary features. I, I'm more inclined to let the market control itself. I mean, because the builders are tapping into what people want. And I guess I'm hesitant to, for us to say, okay, here's the model of what you should do, 'cause that's maybe not what everybody wants. And, you know, I'm, I'm warming up to the community of all ages for the specific fact that young people and old people don't want the same thing, and we don't need to create cookie-cutter environments. And the final point is, so I'm really, with the depth of features that could be affected, I'm disinclined to give what I consider tax, tax-free or tax abatements through permit fees and other incentives. I, that goes against my belief.
Mr. Barber.
And I, I agree with pretty much everything that Mr. Morehead said. Typically, a builder, when they do a spec home, you know, they're, they, I don't wanna say they build it as cheap as they can, but they build it as cheap as they can. They're, they're trying to build a home that is gonna attract somebody to purchase it. When somebody does a custom home, there's usually a plan picked out for that home. And, and there's cost when you change to go to the wider doors and add all these features on here. Are we gonna be offering that service to look somebody's plan over for a custom home and say, this is what we recommend, or this is what City of All Ages recommends for that? Or is this something that they, they can go out and research on their own? I mean, I, I agree, I just think the market will bear. If we're talking about multifamily home, if we're talking about an area that is going to be, you know, a community of several homes built at a time, four, potentially 50 and over, 55 and older, then I, then I think you could put some incentives on those type of things. But for a standard neighborhood, I just, yeah, I, I don't, I don't see a real advantage for a builder to do that. And, and we do a lot of two-story homes. And so to add some of those things in a two-story home, would to me would be, almost be a waste of money at this point, so.
Mr. Stevens.
The proposal was for incentives for one house, that's it, not for every house. Also, when we, when I first started getting interested in this, I started seeing it in fine home building. And then Jim and I went down to the conference center for a seminar for Mid-America Regional Council. Adding some of these features is like 1% of the cost of the house. And the other thing is, is once they are added, it doesn't look institutional, it looks like a regular house. But it's, it's nothing I'm trying to force down somebody's throat, it's just something that we can do one, show it off, and see if there's a market for it. I think a lot of people don't really know what universal design really means, and there might be a way of, of showing prospective buyers what that does mean.
Jeff, were there builders down there that were also participating, as far as what they thought might be attractive to them?
I don't think so. I think most of them were just municipal, you know, like Jim and, and other folks like him.
Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Kellogg.
You just brought up a question that I wanna pose to staff. When Zimmerman built the National Security Campus where I worked, it was built with Leeds gold, or, you know, a certain level. So that means that it was graded on how it was built as far as environmentally. Is there something that is a recognition or a standard for something like what Mr. Stevens is talking about as far as for building houses and that, that we could, if, if something like this is built, that we could try to tap into the, you know, that, that this house or, or this neighborhood is, is this, has, has gotten this award, or has gotten this standard as far as for aging for the community, or whatever I'm trying to say? Does, does that make sense?
It does make sense. You know, that's what would be important to the builder, to be able to showcase that they have a home constructed to a certain standard, elevated standard, if you will. So that'd be most valuable to the builder. We would wanna showcase that as a community that we have this available, but it's getting that builder interested in, in creating that. They certainly would if the buyer wanted them to, but it's getting them to get, you know, not in every home, but getting them to do some of the basic things in more than just one home, is what we're trying to get to, get them interested in it, show them that it's low cost, and then make it a standard practice in all their homes. It's what we'd like to see.
You want, did you wanna say, have something to add to that, Jeff?
Yeah, I had a.
Eric.
Well, okay, from the standpoint of a show home, maybe I would maybe suggest we, we can still accomplish some of this. For example, we can lead by example with a lot of our facilities that we currently have. As we continue to improve them, we demonstrate some of these universal design features that citizens can see that we lead by example. I'm hesitant on buying property for a show home, and I'm not critical, Mr. Stevens, of that particularly. I know where you're getting at, but if you went to a Mid-America Regional Council function, why couldn't we just host a similar activity here and invite the developers here? And, you know, maybe we sponsor it, we pay for it, but, and do it that way. I, I guess I'm, I'm hesitant to create a finite product, 'cause actually what, what I do know of universal design features is they're changing. So even if we did a show home, we'd have to change it soon after anyway. So if we, if we kinda, I'm encouraging that we educate our developers, but I'm not sure if we have to do it by physical demonstration.
Jeff.
It's not just for developers, the showcase home was more for buyers. And it's something that we wouldn't buy, they would build the home, we would just give them a couple, some incentives to make up for the extra cost. It's kind of what I had in mind, which would probably be about $2,000 or $3,000. The seminars we went to, like I said, the, the cost difference is only like 1% or 2%, but it depends on how many features you add. There's so many different levels in there. One level would be just so that you could stand there as long as you could, and the other ones are for totally disabled people. There's, there's.
I do like your idea about hosting something here that talks about what you guys did the research on, and maybe invite our developers and builders to participate.
That could be a start.
And could we not, we could invite home buyers. I mean, just do it for a community benefit. My only hesitation is buying a particular structure and being bound to that structure. But promoting advancements in the community, I'm supportive of.
I mean, it can be a, a Community for All Ages event, something that we could build upon in order for us to get to the Silver Level.
Yeah, the builder that went on the house.
Yeah, we just get right in there. Was there something else? It sounds like we might be moving toward maybe hosting something here.
That's what we're hearing, sir.
Let the community know a little bit more about what the, you know, Community for All Ages and what this universal design code might be able to offer to some builders. Jim, was there a fourth thing?
Oh, yes, there is.
And there's a fourth thing on the, on the agenda here.
Yes.
Yes, there is. Quickly, this proposal is to look at perhaps implementing a requirement regarding elevated decks that are, at this point in time, it's kind of a mixture, some elevated decks have stairways, some don't. But I think Councilmember Stevens was requesting an amendment to look at requiring a stairway from an elevated deck to ground level, when that, when that elevated, when that deck is elevated. Is that accurate?
Anything you wanna add to that, Joe?
Even myself, I'd be, I wouldn't wanna jump off one, even if there's a fire, I mean.
Yeah. Mr. Burke.
I was just walking my dog the other day at the lake, Silver Lake, and noticed one of my neighbors had a, kind of a cool balcony, which is not big enough to maybe put more than two chairs on, right outside their bedroom. And I was like, wow, that would be cool, I could do that, you know, with, with my master bedroom, that'd be great. And I do not think a structure that's probably not big enough for two people to lay down on should have stairways going down to the ground. It's, it's, I think it's a really cool balcony that they have, and I, I'm kinda envious of it. But I think if it had a stairway that was twice the square footage as you measure the, going down the diagonal, it wouldn't make any sense. It would, it would make the whole house look weird and undesirable to future owners. And I don't think we should require that people not be able to have balconies, in my opinion.
Mr. Stevens.
Well, by all measures, I don't think balcony is a deck, so I don't think that would really even be in there. But I think you'd have a hell of a time getting off some of these decks that are screened in as well. It's just kind of a turn of my mind.
Mr. Del, go ahead.
Thank you. I, my short answer to this is no. I don't, I think that's really overstepping our bounds to require that people have stairs off their deck. I, I understand that it could be a fire safety hazard, but then should we also require that they have ladders coming out of second-story windows? Do we need every room to have a door so we can escape? I mean, I think, I think people can choose what safety features they want in their house, and I don't feel like it's our responsibility to force that upon people.
Mr. Barber.
Yeah, I know there are a lot of people that choose not to have stairs just from a, a safety concern of somebody having other access in their home, not just for, for a fire. My question, I didn't look at the code, but on a second-story, or two-story, or story-and-a-half home, do we require a back door on that second story? Or could they build the house with just windows, and so there'd be no access, not even a way to get out of the house in that situation? So is that our code?
Well, there, the accessibility would be through windows. So as long as the windows are accessible to get out.
My comment is if you're gonna require stairs on decks, then you're gonna have to change the code to require a back door way out of every home to get out and have stairs to get down the home.
Mr. Kellogg, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I, I wanna say that I, I believe, Jeff, your, your heart is in, in the right place. I'm going to disagree, okay? And thank, thank goodness we get along. Here's, here's my deal, and, and Councilman Barber just brought it up too, is that a deck off of a bedroom is different to me than a deck off of my kitchen, okay? For the same reasons, personal security. That is another easy access to a place where people go to feel secure. That is, you know, I, I remember my mom saying that she would not buy a house that somebody could just crawl through the window in, you know? And I think a lot of people are like that. My bedroom is on the second floor of the house, and I do feel a sense of security there. I would love to have a deck or a balcony in front of my, my bedroom, it'd be a great amenity. But, you know, and, and I, Joe just gave the, the reason why I, I, why I wouldn't want it in that case. I'd have to have a stairway down in front of my house. It would look stupid. And, and that's no disrespect. But my, my main concern is, is that, or the difference that I see is a common living area where egress is expected, and a bedroom. And Sonia is absolutely right. We, we have those options for fire ladders and different escapes and that. And that falls back onto the homeowner for those, those options. I, I also want to throw out that, you know, it wasn't that long ago, maybe two or three years back, that we changed by the request of the fire marshal to not use engineered lumber for the joist because the, the burn rate was so fast. So we, we changed that, that requirement to where we had to use, where our builders have to use solid lumber, or metal. I, I believe metal is considered also, for that safety factor. I, I also wanna throw out there that we, the, the fire code, or the National Electrical Code, requires fire, not fire, but smoke detectors in very specific places of the house, you know? At what point, you know, my question is, is at what point do we require so much safety devices or safety avenues to make somebody safe? Because quite frankly, we, we, we already require fire, or smoke detectors, and most people... we, we already require fire or smoke detectors, and most people don't change the batteries, you know? We can't protect ourselves from ourselves. That's a personal responsibility. So, you know, I, I'm hesitant on this, but I, I understand the point that, you know, and you've been in my house, you've been there, you've been a guest. My, my back door out of my kitchen, I, I consider that an egress, an exit, an emergency exit. But if, if I was to have a slider door or French doors in any of my bedrooms with a deck off the back of it, that's not an egress, you know, in, in my opinion. So I would ask for, if this was to come about, that that be specifically spelled out, you know, to differentiate between the two different types of living area.
Well, yeah, yeah. I think, you know, you're kind of two and a half into it, and maybe that fourth one didn't go so good. That's all right. That was a good discussion, though. Good discussion. We have to go back to a driveway situation. Did you have to add something else to that?
I did, and I apologize. I apologize, but before I forget it, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the leniency. Mr. Stevens does give a good picture in here, okay? The Lamore Estates or the Greenway Villas, okay? For all practical purposes, I believe these are rentals. On page...
Eight?
Eight. Top picture, page eight. You with me there, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, there are a bunch of duplex. That's a...
Is that, is that a duplex? Is that a rental?
No, that's actual home.
That's a single family?
That's a metal wood.
Okay, then I, I guess I will use it in this case. If that was a rental, if that was a rental, for example, and those, that was an egress, the second egress, that occupant would have to jump over that 36, 38 inch rail to get out of, away from that structure. That's the point I want to make right there, you know, and if that was opened up with just basically two stairs, they could walk down and quick access. I'm, I'm not trying to nitpick here. I'm just trying to point something out that if that is the second exit, entrance, I see a flaw there.
And I apologize, sir. I just want to make, for a point of clarification, when 3166 comes back before the council relative to the driveways, we, I believe, Councilmember Morehead?
Derek?
I, when 31, I'm sorry, sir. When 3166 comes back before the council, you, you are asking for an amendment to the wording, not for it to come back exactly like it was, for the wording and associated curb to be added there.
Yes.
Very good, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all on that item, sir.
Okay. And I think we're done with item A. Kind of hope so. So let's go to B, Creekmore Memorandum of Understanding Amendments.
Mr. Catterett?
I'll try to be quick.
Okay.
Okay. I know two items on this item, two items on two items in the last. Periodically, staff sits down with the developer of Creekmore because it is one of our larger subdivisions, very active. They give us updates on what new phases to expect. We just got to talk through issues that, that may come up from time to time. And the spring of this year and talking with the developer, there were two items of discussion that we wanted to bring forward to the council, and it would take action by the council in amending the memorandum of understanding. When Creekmore came in as a proposal back in 2003, and it was officially approved in January 2004, there was a memorandum of understanding that kind of established the agreement between what the city would do, what the developer would do as this, as this project went through the entire multi-year phases of development. The, the initial approval, there was a master land use plan for the entire subdivision that was presented to the public, presented to the neighbors, and it was what was ultimately approved. It's a, an overall master plan for the subdivision, and it divided the subdivision into areas of single-family development, larger lots, and even villas, smaller lots. There was in remain areas for duplex development in Creekmore, and when it was initially approved, there was actually multifamily development in Creekmore, but that has since been removed. But there was also land area set aside for the school. And then a considerable part of the initial approval was the common area component. So they presented this master plan at that time, 54% of the entire thousand acres of that subdivision was to be set aside as common area. And that's all the code said. It didn't really define what common area was. Over the years, other than looking at the map and knowing it's the golf course and probably the lake, over the years, we have, on administrative level, more clearly defined that, but, you know, the development is more than 50% completed now. The developers got a very aggressive plan, both this year and next, on future phases. They want to kind of be clear on what that common area definition means. What they don't want to end up with is when they get close to the end and suddenly staff, even if there's a staff change or something occurs, common area is defined differently then than what it was understood to be in the beginning. So all we're doing with this particular MOU amendment is defining common area, which we've always handled it this way. The common area is the, the Creekmore Lake, the Creekmore Golf Course, the clubhouse area, and then all the common area tracks that you see when you see a final plaque come through. They do a lot of common area as buffers between one phase and another phase or even adjacent property. That is how staff has always interpreted the common area. We do track the amount of common area they do because from phase to phase, they may slightly shift from the preliminary plan where they maybe showed a little common area between two lots they decided to get rid of. Well, they have to make that up somewhere else. And so we track that very closely, and they continue to be right at the 54% level. So what we want to do with this MOU amendment is again, in those terms, identify what we determine to be common area. And so we think that's pretty straightforward and clear. The second item that we're proposing to amend is language regarding the low-pressure sanitary sewer system. So wait a year, Pac, and I included a map that identifies the areas of the subdivision that are served by this low-pressure sanitary sewer system. The city agreed to allow this type of, of system when Creekmore first came into the community. A lot of discussion between the city engineer and their engineers on this, but we did come to the conclusion we would allow it. And it's really intended to serve lots where the lowest floor of a home is actually at elevation below where a gravity sewer is constructed for, for city purposes. And in essence, how, how the system works, very similar to a sub pump. Basically, there's a tank on the, the very lowest level of the home where the waste does collect into. In the tank is a grinder pump, and through a pressurized system, the waste is pumped up to a, either a collector line that's part of that low-pressure system or actually up to a, a, a gravity sewer. So I, I include an illustration that, that tries to show, explain how that particular system works. What was important when the city allowed this type of system was that it be entirely maintained by both the property owner and the Creekmore Property Owners Association. The city was to have no maintenance responsibility for this system. But as I mentioned, some of the collection lines are located in city right-of-way, and again, it's a collection system that brings the waste to a, a gravity system that the city maintains. A component of the low-pressure system was, in agreement, the MOU was for the city to provide some level of reimbursement for a portion of the cost of maintaining that low-pressure system. Again, there's, this system serves a multitude of lots that are paying water and sewer charges like all the rest of us in the community. But the POA is maintaining elements of that low-pressure system that are in our right-of-way. So we were, as a city and developer, we were to come up with an agreement on how we would calculate and provide that reimbursement. We never came to that agreement. This, you know, we've kind of gone, you know, year to year as the POA's been maintaining the system. They've had to replace pumps in a few instances, but we've never come up with some type of agreement as far as reimbursement. At this point in time, again, the subdivisions have developed, but we currently have subdivision phases utilizing the low-pressure system and expanding into the low-pressure system, is coming up with a, a different model, coming up with, with a, an amendment to the MOU that finalizes this reimbursement that we're supposed to be doing. It makes it, in essence, a very clear line between what the POA maintains and what the city will maintain. So the proposal of this MOU amendment would be for the city to assume responsibility of that portion of the low-pressure system in our right-of-way. So we would begin maintenance of the collection system only, anything that's in our right-of-way. The property owner and the Property Owners Association would still be responsible for the, the service line on the lot and the grinder pump, just like we would be responsible for the service line of a gravity-fed system out of our home. The property owner has to be, in this instance, for the low-pressure system and the, the pump itself. But it, we, in going back, looking at what we should have reimbursed the developer since 2004, when the, when the subdivision was first approved, the MOU amendment would include a one-time payment, and that would be the end of it. There would be no more reimbursement to the developer after this one-time payment, in that we are going to be maintaining the collection lines for which we were giving the reimbursement for. So the one-time payment brings, and taking ownership of the system. Thank you. And we would not only maintain those private lines, collector lines, we would take over ownership of those collection lines, just as we have collection lines in the gravity system. But with the one-time payment, then there's no further reimbursement done. It kind of closes the book on, on that whole agreement procedure. So those are the two amendments that we're proposing to, to the Plenary Commission and City Council at this time, and be glad to answer any questions that you have on that.
Mr. Kell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be curious if there's any deterioration from what we're talking about that is possible for us to take over in the common right of way. What, what are we taking over? I want to know. Is, what?
That's a fair question. I was thinking the same thing. Mike?
Yes, sir. We'd, we'd be taking over some PVC lines and some, and valves. It's very, you know, the PVC is very similar. It's the same material that our, our current sewer system is made out of, and there, there are some control valves because it, it really kind of functions like at points a water main system, and those would need to be exercised on a regular basis, but it would not be a, a large maintenance burden on, on staff.
Okay, because what I'm most worried about is the situation where we had to put in an oxygenator for our sewer lines that push down here to the Mazuma to get rid of that, you know, and how the, the acids and that were deteriorating those lines. That's where I'm at with this, and this is my concern, is that we are not inheriting or buying a so deteriorated situation that, you know, I want to know what we're going to be looking forward to in the future with, with cost associated and that, you know?
Go ahead, Jeff. Obviously, because this is Creekmore, these lines are very new, very little deterioration, and of course, as Mike indicated, a very low staff time maintenance type issue. Have to exercise the valves, make sure we get that done, make sure they're open. One of the things that led to this being the more attractive item to put into the MOU is what is in there now calls for forever making a payment to them for maintenance, for their maintenance on this, and we could not come to an agreement on what they thought it, obviously, they're not experts at it. They don't have anybody internally that could do it, so they would have to contract this out. So their view of what the value of the maintenance was has, since the beginning of the MOU, been different, drastically different than our value. So we want to get out of the, the infinite payment that would have to go to them, pay a one-time payment. We know what to do up there as far as maintenance is concerned. It's new now. This is the more attractive option that we would be recommending to the council.
Mr. Morehead?
Mr. Fearborn, and, and I appreciate the recommendation, so help me understand, half of Edgewater and all of Kensington is not built yet. So we are taking over the responsibility for areas that are not in yet. Is there a substantial cost difference? We will be bearing the cost, initial cost of the collection pipes, where before they were bearing the cost putting them in and making sure they were properly installed right out of the gate? How much fluctuation has that been analyzed?
As far as the infrastructure going in is concerned, like any development, it's the responsibility of the developer to put the pipes in, not us. Then we simply take over the ownership.
Additional question. Back on the percentage of the common areas, Mr. Catterett, I mean, reading what is suggested to be changed is a pretty straightforward and generic language used. Just, just to ask the question, has there been any, have we been operating on a different definition, or we just been inferring what is listed here? So there's really no change in definition?
We've been inferring what is put into writing here. They just wanted it memorialized in the MOU, in case I'm gone before they finish out the subdivision, and somebody has a different interpretation, quite honestly, although I do intend to be here. They just, and again, that's how we've been tracking it too, sir. So every final plaque that comes through, we keep track of how much common space is provided to make sure they stay close to that 54%. So they're not saddled with, you know, the last phase that come in, and suddenly the entire phase has to be common area.
We don't want you to leave.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on that. You mentioned the golf course and the, and the, the lake, but are there any children up in that area? Where do they go to play with their soccer, with the other things? They don't have any kind of park up there at all, that I understand. Am I wrong on that? Because, I mean, where do they go? We don't have enough places now for our children on their soccer teams and their practice fields. So, and there's nothing up in that area with over 1,000 people. So what are, what are we doing? Shouldn't we have something in there that mandates a certain amount of that should be parkland so they can put, you know, goals up there, whatever's necessary?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, as far as the, the parkland dedication, again, when the subdivision came in, it was a thousand-acre subdivision, and so they had to go through the same parkland dedication process as any other subdivision came through. So that was done early, again, before they became approved. They went through the park board and got their approval. They do, for every home, there is a, a fee in lieu, but they also got some credit for some of the private amenities that they have, because there are playgrounds, there is active recreational areas within the subdivision available to the residents of the subdivision. So they do have, there's not city parkland, per se, up in that subdivision, but the fee in lieu was intended to pay for city parkland amenities nearby the subdivision. So they kind of have a mixture of both private and public.
Can, can children from Ward Four go up there and be on the soccer team up there?
Again, the, the amenities that I refer to are private amenities for the subdivision residents, but they're paying fee for the residents to also have access to other public parks. But at the time, there was not a public parkland dedication of land required as part of the subdivision.
Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Catterett. I know, I asked you about this, these rioter pumps back when I was on planning and zoning three or four years ago. Can I, can you remind me the line that goes from the grinder pump to the collection, the sewer lines that are, that we're discussing? The line that connects the two, that's, is that the responsibility of the homeowners association? And the grinder pump is the responsibility of the homeowner? Or is it, is that correct?
Anything on the private lot is the responsibility of the homeowners, but the Property Owners Association also has responsibility for that. They, that was a requirement, I believe, from the state that, that there be an over, an organization oversaw. So in case there was a failure, somebody had the ability to step in immediately and remedy that problem. And that's how it works. If we have a grinder pump repair or replacement, the POA steps in, makes that replacement, and then bills back to the property owner. That way, DNR, the city, all are assured that that sanitary situation is, is taken care of. So, but anything on the private lot is responsibility of the property owner first.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thanks for the clarification.
Jay, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Two things. One, I think that this is a reasonable MOU, clears up some potential financially, financial obligation ambiguities. I think we should go through with it. And to Ms. Hubach's point, while there's not something in the subdivision per se, Hawkeridge Park, a butt's up to this on the south end. So, there are soccer goals on the north end of Hawkeridge Park and of course, you know, we're going to be developing that to a great degree over the next 18 months as part of the bond project. So, there is an area here attached to this, although not part of, within the bounds of the subdivision itself.
Staff will proceed with bringing it formally to the planning and zoning and subsequently to the council, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on. Firing range lease agreement.
We're having to make a change of personnel here, sir. Just one moment. I'll turn it over to Chief Zimmerman for the first part of this presentation, sir. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Well, I have the dubious distinction of being the longest standing capital project in the history of Raymore.
And that concludes Chief's presentation.
And I'm finished. I am so pleased to be here to talk about this. As Mr. Fearborn mentioned, I'm going to give you just a little bit of history of this project for those of you who have been on the council since we started this years and years ago. Our first memorandum up our chain of command was actually in June of 2012 and the reasons that we gave at that time, obviously, the Raymore Police Department didn't have any place to shoot. We were using the Harrisonville Range, a number of other ranges which were, for any variety of reasons, cost prohibitive. Belton actually requires users of their range to use lead-free ammunition, which is very expensive. When we were going to Harrisonville, we weren't able to always go there when it was convenient or we were, you know, able to send our officers there. We'd have to wait for it to be unlocked. We'd have to, you know, wait for someone to respond back to lock it back up, you know, any variety of things. And the Raymore Police Department had gone to all sorts of different places over the course of, you know, the history of the department, you know, and able to, you know, to be able to shoot. Some of them were just too great a distance, you know, the Lake City Range, the Kansas City Police Range, you know, and a variety of others, you know, where we might be able to do that. So, when we started looking after I arrived here in April of 12, it was for all of those reasons, you know. Would we be able to, you know, find a place, you know, here, you know, close to Raymore, either in Raymore or in the county or someplace that was, you know, relatively close and, would be practical to use. At that time that, that we started looking or we started discussing this, we were anticipating the amount of property that we would probably need for that range would be approximately five acres. For, you know, those law enforcement folks, you know, in the room will understand that we're looking, or we were looking at a hundred yard range because obviously, our officers also qualify and shoot with rifles as well as handguns. And so, we would need a hundred yards in length and then approximately 50 yards wide to allow for multiple target positions. Because some of the places that we shoot, you know, they're so narrow and so small, you can only really get a couple of people on them at a time and so it's not really very practical for us to take only one or two folks down there at a time. And so, that extra acreage that we were looking for was for expansion, classroom, storage and all those kinds of things. So, with those things in mind, back in 2012, I sent Captain Roger Mayberry to arrange a development conference in Colorado to look at all kinds of things about building and developing a range. We have some expertise here in the area locally. Kansas City PD has, has built a variety of ranges and they've been a huge help to us, but we're looking at, at a number of things. Environmental stewardship, you know, obviously, we need to make sure that we don't disturb the environment to the extent that we can, but things like design, configuration and orientation of the range are all really important. We, we've learned way more about range design, I think, than we ever thought we would, being north facing, obviously, not shooting toward residences or across water, across roadways, grade and elevation, ground contamination, you know, all things that we're considering. But most importantly, when we were looking at different locations, noise, neighbors, future development, you know, those kinds of complaints that, that you might get. So, after the council at that time passed the $100,000 in the capital budget, again, longest standing project ever, we have literally been looking for property ever since that time, ever since 2012. And a number of folks on the council have provided suggestions about where we might go and look, but I'll just really quickly give you some of the, the locations that we've looked at. The Owen Good Lift Station, for obvious reasons, that was really not a very desirable place to, to actually shoot. Curwell, there was property out there that was being auctioned off on the courthouse steps. We spoke with Randy Spalding at one point in time about his property there at 155th and Curwell. We were actually in some negotiations with the city manager for the city of Kansas City on some property near the power station on the north side of 155th. Private property north of 155th, we spoke with some retired KCPD folks that actually own property up there, Kim Hannan and Kenny Burnett. We've talked to land behind Public Works next to Rec Park. We didn't feel like that was a good place. We'd be shooting like toward your house. We actually, we actually had Lonnie Branson helping us at one point in time. I know you don't remember all, all of these, but Lonnie Branson helping us. We had some pretty extensive conversations with Doug Galant, who's the owner of Pyramid Roofing, about some property out on Hubach and, and then Ms. Hubach actually provided us with some contact information, the old Parrot Farm skeet shooting range where the ground was already contaminated. We talked to them fairly extensively, even made them an offer at one point in time. And then the quarry property that's located right by Town and Country, which is currently being leased by the sheriff's department because the Rambus Tower, the radio tower is located there, and so they're leasing a significant portion of that property there for the Rambus Tower, which is actually what brought us to the quarry and brought us to JR Pessek. So, I will turn this over to Mr. Fearborn because that's how, you know, through all of that, as we've continued to look, you know, over the last several years, how we finally ended up in the quarry. And so, if you all have any questions for me, I, yeah, actually in the quarry, so.
We began our conversations with Mr. Pessek, in essence, wanting to, we were down there and obviously, he's down there and, and the chief is, is fending off ticks and other wild animals as we're crawling through the wilds down there by the Rambus Tower. And so, we made contact with JR and for those of you who don't remember, JR was of course, the owner of Town and Country. Disposal has sold it off since then to Waste Corporation of America, but still has a considerable amount of land, a considerable amount of land down there, including about one-half of the old quarry dig. And so, we started talking with him about the possibility of purchase. Prior to all of this, as we were going through this, this extensive list of folks, many of which were out in the county, and especially when we were working with Lonnie, we, Mr. Catterett found out that the process for making purchase for a firing range out in the county is extremely extensive as far as getting approvals through, the things that you're going to have to do if you own that property. It is not, nearly is extensive if there is a private property owner who simply wants to put a private firing range on his property. In fact, Mr. Pessek then approached us with the idea, instead of purchasing it and going through all of that, how about if I just build it for you, you rent it from me, I'll put a classroom structure out there, I'll do all of the birmingham work, I'll do everything, you just rent it from me each month, I'll take on all of the land liabilities that are associated with it, you just rent it from me each month. And so, and he does not have to go through the approval processes because it's his private property out in the county. His proposal to us was that he build it, hand the key over to us with exclusive, with the city having exclusive control of the range. We hold the key, he would do any of the land work that we asked him to do, or we have built into the contract the possibility of, of us, he, he has given us the flexibility if we see some, some needs out there that he hasn't done with the basic range, we have the ability to go on there and make changes accordingly with, with mutual approval, which he's been incredibly agreeable to even up to this point. The, the rental fee could be offset because he, the contract also calls, or the agreement also calls for the city to have the ability to sub-rent this to any agencies that, that would like to come onto there. So, we, we see that as a revenue source to offset the rental fee that we would be paying each month. The initial term of agreement, well, I'll let Mr. Zer go into the terms of the agreement that have been negotiated. In essence, the chief and Mr. Zer wrote this agreement. I think they had three non-substantive changes. Mr. Pessek would have preferred that, that no attorneys were involved. You, you all know how he works. He ran an entire disposal company pretty much on a handshake. So, that's what we're bringing to you tonight and I will turn it over to Mr. Zer to discuss the terms of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. I'm happy to provide any information regarding the terms of the proposed lease. In general terms, you've already provided the information. It is basically $500 per month is what the lease agreement calls for, grand total of $6,000 in a given year, which can be paid in advance by the city if they so desire. We have outlined provisions with regard to the description of the use that are going to be provided and incorporated in exhibit, which you see up on the overhead here that shows you the area that would be utilized in general as part of this, as part of this firing range use. The permitted use will be limited entirely to the use of the facility as a firearm or a firing range. We will have access to a small building out there at the location that has already been installed and can install additional buildings and other materials if needed. As far as restrictions on the use, basically, we have full control as far as the Raymore Police Department to make determinations on the size of calibers of guns utilized at the facility, the hours of operation and any alterations, although if there are alterations that are required after the fact, we will have to get written permission from Mr. Pessek. With regard to hazardous substances, we are relatively open there. We do not have to, we are not worrying about the cleanup of the hazardous substances because it is on the private property. We don't have the requirements for, for cleanup. We will have compliance with regard to Missouri law and any of the other requirements that might be in place for the operation of a firing range. With regard to maintenance and restoration, I'd probably refer you to the exhibit B, which is attached. Basically, the city will be responsible for any overhead baffle system that gets installed, any fencing around the firing range and/or training facility, the gate at the entry of the facility as well as the firing range berms, any lighting that may be installed, any pneumatic turning targeting system that may be installed and any storage shed, picnic tables or other signage and flagpoles that are operated during the use of the firing range. So, those are the limited, a number of responsibilities that we will have for ongoing maintenance at this location. It is a great deal. We do have insurance and indemnification language that would be required and I've confirmed with the chief that this insurance and liability coverage is acceptable and we will have the appropriate coverage for it. That is, oh, taxes and utilities will still be paid by Mr. Pessek, the original landowner, if there are any, and we have the ability of subleasing to a, or I'm sorry, allowing other entities to utilize it. We would not be able to sublease it without written consent of the lessor, but so far, we have not had any substantial discussions with that and I anticipate that the Raymore Police Department would be able to utilize this for shooting competitions and other options like that as part of their exclusive use. Mr. Weedman represented Mr. Pessek during the course of the negotiations. I think he had three or four changes, each of which we found acceptable during the course of the discussions. And so, what you have here is an agreed upon lease agreement for both sides of the parties involved. I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope that covers the general terms that you'd want to see in it. Yes.
Yeah, I didn't see in here... I didn't see in here, write a first refusal if we chose, if they chose to sell the property. Is that something that we thought about or did I miss it or?
No, you don't. You do have an opportunity after a five-year period of time for continuing negotiations under, or I'm sorry, to continue it out or alter the negotiated terms of it. That's under the first extension option under section 1.3. We would have the same terms as any lessie of property at the end of the day. So, you are getting a firing range for relatively cheap over an extended period of time on property that is going to be extremely difficult to develop for any other purposes, would be my argument. But no, there is no right of first refusal for it.
Have you had any conversations with him about that, chief?
I have not.
No.
Okay. Mr. Kellum, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We spoke of utilities. What utilities are available on that property? What do we, I, you know, 'cause...
Actually, Mr. Pessek, let me back up here. He's looking at, at actually leasing this portion of the property to the west of the range to a tree farm and he has talked about running electricity, this of course, 291 here, but running electricity across the property. So, we've discussed being able to tag on to that electricity at some point in the future. We don't actually have any, any utilities out there now, but he's talking about running electricity from the street.
My question would be as far as for like water and sewer when we're out there. Well, yeah, I don't want to...
You were talking about porta-potties, weren't you?
Porta-potties, is that what we're...
Yes.
Until he ran water.
Until he did, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Stevens, did you have something?
Did you say something about subleasing that to other organizations or individuals?
Well, probably to departments. This is not an unprecedented situation. Sugar Creek has the same situation with Lafarge Concrete up there on their properties. Lafarge Concrete gave them a piece of property that they developed for a minimal cost and they have other agencies that go in there and use it for training and pay their, their agency.
Law enforcement.
Other law enforcement.
Just law enforcement?
Yes. Because our insurance won't allow us to do otherwise.
I was thinking about something like Nob Creek.
Yeah. Mr. Barber?
And I'm sure you've researched this. Is there any case law where the leasing is not responsible? Once, you know, you start shooting in the ground and putting metal in the ground, that, you know, that changes the whole dynamics of the property and just want to make sure we're not going to have any legacy responsibility coming back if you ever says, okay, I want to sell this to somebody, now the city's responsible for doing the cleanup. Now, from my personal opinion, I think it's funny that all this metal does come from the ground, but yet we put it back in the ground and now it's a bad thing. So, that's just my personal opinion.
Mr. Zer?
In this particular case, the, the fact that it was previously utilized as a quarry gives us pretty carte blanche with regard to the utilization of the property and potential hazardous issues there. We will not have cleanup responsibilities at the conclusion of the use here and those are spelled out in the terms of the lease.
And then...
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. And then if it's okay with the council, I'm just going to have the chief give just a real brief description of it.
Sure. I think Mr. Stevens had a question, real quick.
I was under the impression a lot of lead coming out of firearms doesn't really leach into the soil anyway. You might want to look into that. I don't think it's really a hazard in so many cases.
Well, and, and actually, there are a number of companies that, that will actually recover any lead that's in the soil. They'll mine it out for you and you can actually make some money off of that, but we, we wouldn't be looking at, at doing that unless that was Mr. Pessek's desire at some point in the future that he would want to mine out the, the lead from the berm.
Mr. Mayor, a question, will it be fenced off so that we can determine who's going in and out of it? I don't know what the land looks like. Can you explain what, what I'm seeing up there to me?
Absolutely, ma'am. That's what I'm just about to do. What you're looking at here obviously is a Google Earth picture and we were really excited when now our range now appears from space. So, you know, we can, we can now see it because this is a fairly recent Google Earth photo as of about the end of March, so you can see the range there. Again, this is 291 here on the right-hand side of the screen. Again, this is 291 here on the right-hand side of the screen. Oh, okay. What is this thing? Oh, there you go. 291 here on the right-hand side, and then the driveway, which is our access off of 291. This is kind of a hill. It's hard to see here. And then lake here. This will be our parking lot here. The building, which you'll see in some pictures after this one, is actually located right here. So, you know, right here at about the break is our 100-yard line where we would do rifle shooting from. Now, you can see this road here actually takes you over to the other side of the quarry and back around to where the Rambus Tower is, but yes, it, it is our desire at some point in the future to have the area fenced, but at least initially, what we'll be looking at is just a gate here. Obviously, we'll want a flag and flagpole to show when people are shooting on the range and signage that says, you know, that it's a Raymore firing range. But, you know, fencing at some point in time, you know, hopefully will be around this area, obviously, to protect, you know, from having people come in there and, and shoot on the range, because to be honest with you, we've been down and we've already found some shell casings, so people are already testing out our range as we speak. So, yes, at some point in the, in the future, you know, as we pay on this lease and, and we are able to determine, you know, what other funding is available for us to make those improvements that Mr. Zur talked about, the baffle system. And again, I'll show you here in just a minute, but this is the berm here at this end. It's our desire to build this baffle system with railroad ties to keep any rounds from escaping the range. It also assists with noise and, and things like that, but that'll be built into this ridge up here so that, you know, we won't have rounds that are, are leaving the range, especially those that are filed, fired from a greater distance.
How far away from the city limit of Raymore is that?
10 miles? 10, 10 miles, maybe?
Yeah, well, from Huback Hill Road, it's probably only about four or five miles south.
The reason I have, um, the Parrot Range, where I am, I can hear the shoots. I can hear them with the rifle and the bullet shots.
Is that the one on Prairie Lane, isn't it?
Parrot Farm. It's on Parrot Farm Road.
I can hear them, and I was just wondering, you know.
Parrot Road.
Okay. What you're looking at here, and again, you know, some of what we learned about range development and, and range design is to face north, and so you're looking, you know, toward the berm of the range, and it's our desire, and we've had some dirt donated, thank you to the mayor, that we're gonna continue to build this up, and, and I'll show you kind of a side berm shot, because we want to build that baffle system here into the, just below the top of this ridge. So, you know, you're facing due north, looking downrange. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, except, except I really don't want anything that bullets might bounce off of, but you know, just probably not, not a good idea. This, again, just a further back shot, you know, over to the right, obviously, would be 291 here in the driveway that comes down, but this is just looking downrange. So, you can see that, you know, we have, have plenty of room to be able to rifle shoot, and, and as Mr. Fearborn mentioned, and Jonathan as well, that, you know, we are hoping that as word of, of our range gets out to other law enforcement agencies, we've already had, you know, some contact from like NRA, training, shooting, that people are looking for ranges that are long enough for them to be able to do rifle training and, and that sort of thing, tactical teams, you know, throughout the area. The Kansas City Range Master has been out. They're very much interested in, in being able to possibly utilize this because they're looking to build another outdoor range as well. So, I will not hesitate to take people's money.
Is that gravel?
It's, it's very fine out of the, out of the quarry. It's like pea gravel. It is so, so, yeah, so, so, so fine, but what our, our desire, and we've talked to Mr. Pessek about this as well, is to eventually make this grass. But, but what we, or what he mentioned, and, and the gentleman who built the range, is that you let this get rained on and get it beaten down, that, that it literally is as hard as concrete now, and so we put dirt over it and then put grass on it eventually. Just this shot, and I don't know if you can really see, the, the side berms only come down so far, and so we'll be looking to build them up so that we don't have any, especially this one to the east, so that we don't have any rounds that, you know, we lose, you know, out to the, the roadside. There's, there's nothing here on the west side, but we're looking especially to build them up on the east side. There's our classroom. Very exciting, very tiny, but, and then you can see, looking from the berm back south, and, and what you can't see here, of course, our neighbor, our only neighbor, is Town and Country, and, and so they're, they're, you know, operating 24 hours a day, you know, with recycling and, and their machines, so I don't think that, you know, any noise that we would, we would create is gonna be a problem for them. And then this is just looking back up the driveway where the gate would be, the entrance, and again, a shot of the side berm, which we feel like needs to be built up probably several more feet.
What's the elevation here? I, I don't want to have to worry about anything, you know, the bullets can go a long way, a long distance, and is it going, is the baffling is going to handle that?
The, the berm that you were looking at, Ms. Huback, on, on the backside, is, is easily 25 or 30 feet high, but we're going to build that baffling system into, just below the ridge, so that, you know, nothing will, will skip out there. Yeah, nothing will skip out, but the, the berm itself, even without the baffling, is about 30 feet tall.
Well, it skips a pretty flat step, you know.
Yes.
But it does.
And then this, then, again, this just, you know, driveway. I'm gonna make Mr. Crass loan me his paint stripper so I can stripe the parking lot. But that's it so far, and, and I would love to take a field trip out there and let you all see what it looks like and, as we move forward.
Will this agreement be on the next agenda or down the road?
That is, that is our goal, sir.
Okay.
If, if council is good with that. Staff would recommend from a budgetary standpoint, of course, this will be $6,000 a year. There is $100,000 set aside in the restricted revenue fund. Staff would recommend that, that the council allow us to continue to reserve that $100,000. That gets us through three full terms of the agreement. One of the items, from a future negotiation standpoint, Mr. Pessek has indicated his, his goal is to make up the amount of money as quickly as possible that he put in, that he put into it initially. After that, staff would see the ability, and it's written into the agreement, the possibility of renegotiating that price down, but for now, we would recommend keeping that money in because as the chief indicated, there are some capital improvements that we would like to entertain, like fencing around there and get those built into this, but we still feel like there's probably three full terms of the agreement that would be paid for unless we were to negotiate the price down at a future date, which is a very real possibility in my mind. So, with, with council approval, we would leave that $100,000 in the restricted revenue fund.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Mr. Doggawad?
Thank you. I have a few questions. So, one of my questions was, is the budgeted money just gonna be used for rent or for the improvements, and if so, do you have an idea how much those improvements are gonna cost? Are we planning to do those right away? Are we putting those off for a while? How soon will PD get to use this? And then you mentioned that the driveway goes through to other parts of the land that people own, but also that we'll have a key, so will other people have the key to be able to drive through? Is there access from another point? Just a few questions I had.
From the standpoint of the, I would see the fence, I, I would see all of this coming from the same fund, the same capital fund. The, the fence, I do not have a cost estimate, and Mr. Crass is entertaining our executive session guest out there, so probably, conservatively, I want to say $10,000 to $12,000 for the type of fence that we're talking about. That may be a little bit high, the, but it's also gotta be a pretty high fence. The reason I would see the fence going in almost immediately is because eventually, when that roadway is being, if that roadway gets used, Mr. Pessek was actually talking about the possibility that the tree farm, the access, would be coming in from the, from the other direction through the quarry. So, that may be a non-issue for us, but just in case it was an issue, or people are known to hop over gates, we'd still like to have that fence in almost right away. I would see, I, I can't speak for their scheduling, but immediately after the agreement is signed and, and approved by the council, we, right now, we have exclusive access to the property, so I, the insurance would be triggered by the second read of the council, and that's all they would be waiting for and want to insist on is that the agreement is in place. So, almost immediately, I would say.
Yes, and I'm sorry, and in answer to your question about use of the range, we can continue, we, we can do up-close shooting right now, even without the baffle system, and, and the course of fire that we use for qualification is an NRA course where al- almost all of our shooting is, is at very close range, and, and so, you know, building the baffle system and, and, you know, making those improvements that we want to, to make are, are not going to be, are not going to impact our ability to be able to go there and do the up-close qualification shooting now. The rifle shooting, absolutely. You know, we wouldn't want to go out there and, and try and shoot rifles there, at least in, in the short term, but that's not a qualification course for us. So, as we bring on new officers, and we have an officer that's in training right now, and we want to be able to go out and, and do that qualification, you know, as, as soon as you all give the green light, we'll be able to, to go out and use that, even without a fence or the baffle system, so.
Yeah, 'cause as I understand, we have our own temporary targets, stand-up targets.
We do. We, we use temporary freestanding targets right now that we keep in a trailer, and, and we take them either out to Harrisonville or, or to other places when we use them. So, we, we do. We wouldn't even have to have the turning target system yet.
All right. Just to follow up, I, I just want to say that I, I would hate to see that money all sit in an account to pay the rent for the next three years when we can't use it to its fullest extent because we don't have the money to, to build the parts that we need to be able to use it to its full extent. So, that was kind of where I was going with that. I want to be sure that we're spending the money to make it most usable for us before we're saving money to pay the rent for the, for the way in the future with that $100,000. That was the intent of that.
Are you talking about turning targets and stuff like that, automation of some kind, or just any improvements?
I mean, the, the money was to purchase land and to build a building there and make, make it usable for them, and, I mean, I, in my opinion, we could get $6,000 into our budget quite easily. I would hate to keep that money that we intended to build the range back to pay the rent. I want to see it, whatever, whatever they need to use it, I want that. I would like to see that money spent on that before saved for rent.
Okay. Mr. Kell?
That's exactly what, where my thoughts are at, too, is, you know, I'm gonna ask for some clarification, forgive me for this, but the, we, 2012, man, years and years ago. You haven't been here that long.
It was, this was about two months after I arrived, so.
Yeah, but anyway, $100,000 is what we set aside for a reserve fund, and what my question is, would we, the improvements that we're talking about right now, what I'm getting at is that we're not gonna touch that $100,000, but would that require us to make a budget amendment out of our general budget or, or some other budget to, to pay for this? I, I guess.
No, no, the, the intention, what staff would be recommending is that, that an amount be left in the reserve fund to do the improvements to get the range open, fencing, flagging, all of that, if we needed to expand on the building that was down there. That money is there so that, as Councilmember Doggawad indicated, we can get the range up and running. Then we would also recommend that at least the first term of the agreement, the money that is in the reserve fund be, be used in whatever form we would have to do that. It would probably require a budget amendment to move it from the reserve fund to the operating fund, because the reserve fund is a capital fund, but we would recommend that that money be used to make these rent payments. The rest of it could either sit there in case there are future improvements that we're looking for, or it could be transferred out on a regular ba, it would basically, in effect, be fund balance, but we would hold it in that reserve fund for capital improvements associated with the range at this time, and then if no capital improvements would, would occur, or we reached the next five-year period of the agreement and we renegotiated, then all of that money could be flushed back into the, the fund balance of the general fund, and we could start budgeting.
Mr. Mayor, what I want to see is a full plan of where we are now and what we plan to do when this thing is developed at its maximum, so that we're not just buying a pig and a poke. We want to know exactly what is costing the taxpayers and what they can expect for it, and I don't think that's too much to ask for you to give us a site plan, just like you would for any other commercial venture. Give us a site plan of what you plan to do and the different phases so that we know what are we going on it, because it may be that we want to accelerate the plan and we may want to slow it down, but that's up for the council to decide.
Mr. Holman?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate everyone's passion on this subject, but we're getting way too far into the weeds on this. We're simply agreeing to sign an agreement to lease the place. You're, you're talking several months, if not a year, down the road before they can put anything together like that. I, I appreciate the passion. I've seen it. It's very nice, and I think we'll get there, but I think we're, we're planning for about eight Christmases in the future right now.
Well, I've been involved in this since 19, 1900. That's how long it seems like, and, and I was here, I was here at that time, but I have been involved in it and looking for sites and different things, and so I have, I am not a gun enthusiast, but I know the need for it, and I want to make sure that we do exactly what we need to do so that our men and women can be qualified.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, did you have something?
I would ask if you had any desire for bench rest and stuff like that.
I'm sorry, desire for what?
Bench rest and overhead storage, overhead structures and whatnot, like a regular shooting range, maybe even berms that are shorter so that you can shoot from the same line with pistols and rifles.
We've discussed, we have two range masters within the police department, and then again, we also brought out the KCPD Range Master as well, and, and, sir, I know that you're familiar with those different types of, of shooting courses where you move from side to side, or you move, you know, to the right or to the left. Right now, we just are so excited at the prospect of having our own range that, that, you know, shooting, you know, straight ahead, the qualification course. One of the things that was mentioned by Mr. Zur in, in one of the attachments is that I have begged and borrowed, and the KCPD is looking at giving us their pneumatic turning target system when they shut down the coal mine range, and, and so for, fairly inexpensively, we may be able to get that system up and running. We've never in Raymore had a turning target system, so it'll be really nice for us to be able to do things like that. So, baby steps. If I have a mound of dirt that I can shoot into, I, I will do a little bit at a time going forward, so, yes.
I agree. I think the big hurdle is the site, of course, which we've now acquired or are going to acquire, and you need, you need a little flexibility here, Ms. Huback, because there are so many different types of amenities that we can do. A lot of it can be done with, just like what the chief said, some donated materials, things officers will put together. We've got some pretty creative firearms guys that I've seen put together some nice bench for stabilization for the long gun shooting, and, you know, I mean, it, so we have to build in a little flexibility here. I think for you to be able to get a picture for what the final outcome's gonna be is gonna be pretty difficult, because we really don't know. We, we'll take it to a, a level at some point to get our qualifications in, but then if there is an opportunity for us to advance beyond that, I think we need that flexibility here in the initial part of the plan for the chief in order for them to kind of use their creativity.
I can, I can understand that. At the same time, I understand the $100,000 that we've got set aside, and if we're not gonna use it for this, we need to use it for something else that we've got set money aside for. So, I am concerned following the taxpayers, had their, what they're getting for their, their, was it the bang for their buck, or what buck for the bang, or whatever you want to say it on that.
Unintended, huh?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, sounds good. We'll move along with that, I think.
Yes, we will, sir.
It's the consensus I'm getting here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we finally get to turn the page of the agenda. Good. [laughing].
Are we going to talk about Google Fiber now?
Yes, we are. Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I wanted to give you a quick update on how the city is moving along with Google Fiber, because it is very likely that construction will start before our next work session. And so I wanted to make sure you were all up to speed with that. Google has not made an official public announcement that they are coming to Raymore yet, but we do expect that sometime later this month. But we have continued, or we have actually started having bi-weekly engineering meetings with them, with our entire team, the Google team, and all of their subcontractors to talk through the installation of fiber in our right-of-ways. So I just want to take you through the quick phases of this project and let you know the conversations that we're having so far, to kind of prime you all on that. And then as we continue to meet more, I'll be back to give additional updates. So, the Google, Google has signed an agreement with South Metro to put their fiber hut on the South Metro property right over here. It's moving through the planning and zoning process now, and it will be a pre-manufactured building with a fence around it, and they do have an agreement that was just approved with South Metro for it to go on their property. The next phase, once that gets in, is to start the build-out of the fiber. They are laying all-new fiber throughout our community, so there will be extensive work taking place in our right-of-ways. And I just want to reiterate to all of you that this will be a very complicated and time-intensive project for staff, that's a lot of right-of-way to put a brand-new utility into. And so, we still have a lot to work through on how staff will be overseeing this project, and we feel pretty good about it so far, based on the phasing and the meetings that we have so far. But that will be something that staff is working through. Fortunately, they're going to Belton at the same time, so we've already started to have some conversations with Belton to see how they're managing it and how we might be able to work together on that process. So the first stage is for Google to put a backbone in, and that will essentially be getting fiber to the hut. And then they will be doing their distribution phase, which is getting fiber from the hut to the subdivision, so we go fiber to the hut, and then fiber from the hut to the subdivisions. And then stage three is to run fiber from the subdivision, like one point at the subdivision, out throughout the subdivision. And then the final phase will be doing drops to the individual homes who opt in to have Google. So they have identified zones and a phasing process that will happen throughout the city, which will help us manage the right-of-way works and permits. And then we will be coordinating with other capital projects that are happening through town. We're getting them a schedule of all the projects we're doing, all of our events coming up, etc., so we can coordinate all of that as needed. They do expect all of that work to begin shortly, probably by the end of this month, and then it will be wrapped up by the end of 2016, with the drops to the homes beginning at the beginning of 2017. So that's when people will actually begin getting Google in their homes and being able to use it. When they make the announcement in mid-June about it actually coming to Raymore, they will have instructions on how people can begin signing up, and an email distribution list they can get on to get updates about the process. This will follow all of our regular construction rules and work in the right-of-way, and so our regular construction hours, etc. It will follow our standard yard restoration requirements, and I just want to emphasize this to all, because we're going to be working in a lot of right-of-way and a lot of people's yards. Our requirement is it must be left as good as it was before or better. And for Google, this is going to mean topsoil, seed, and an erosion mat. And so, we are going to have to do a lot of public education about what that means for the homeowners that will have work done in their yards on how to make sure that grass grows back. We, I have a good feeling about Google and the fact that we're a city, we're not their first city, they've been through a lot of cities so far, and they have certainly learned their lessons, and we've had some great conversations so far about some new process improvements that they're rolling out in this phase, working with Raymore and Belton to improve upon what's happened in the past in communities. But I think that'll be a big opportunity for public education about what that yard restoration process looks like. And then, of course, just customer service in general through that project is going to be a priority, and so they will, or they have already, a main customer service line, which is where we'll be directing people first. And then we're looking at some ways to back that up internally in the city to provide additional support if people aren't getting what they're looking through, looking for through the Google customer service process. So just to hit the schedule with you again, mid-June, we're expecting an announcement that it's officially coming to Raymore. Early July, we'll be kicking off construction. The end of 2016, we'll be finishing our build-out. Early 2017, we'll start the drops to the home. And then sometime this fall, you'll actually see a franchise agreement from Google to allow them to operate as a franchise in our community, so that will be coming as well. So that's just a quick update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hubach?
Yes, I want to know what's going to cost me as a taxpayer and what'll cost the city. So are there certain fees involved? I don't know anything at all about what's, I haven't been following it. So I want to know, what's it going to cost me as a taxpayer, and what is it going to cost the city, and will we be getting any money out of this as a rich source of revenue?
I think it's no, no, and yes, but go ahead.
Thank you, sir. What the mayor said. The, this is, Google is an internet provider, just like Time Warner Cable or AT&amp;T. And so, if you don't want to buy it, you don't have to, no. The franchise agreement will mean revenue to the city, just like franchise agreements with any of our other utilities, so there will be a revenue source to the city.
Yeah, and there is no initial cost to the citizens either. I mean, that's, you can actually sign up for free initially, that's what they were doing at the rate town, folks. I don't think we're going to have that opportunity here, though. Because that was kind of a promotional thing when they first came to the area.
That was just their initial rollout in Kansas City, so all of our customers...
But there are different levels of attachment to Google, just like any other.
Okay. Well, I'm always concerned about the tax impact upon the citizens, because we have a lot of senior citizens who do not want automatic increases in things. They just simply can't afford it.
Yeah. Mr. Stevens?
Speaking of the other competitors, they are also working on gigabit services. Was, do you know anything about that at all?
They have not approached us with any of those conversations yet. We know that the other providers are looking at it, but no one has come to talk to us yet about what that might mean in additional infrastructure in our right-of-ways. I was just going to say, my son will want to know, can we pay extra for our neighborhood to come first? So they have identified places where they think people are, so Google, the way they work is you have to kind of rally in your neighborhood in order for them to do neighborhood drops. They are going to pre-identify some neighborhoods that they think are most likely to sign up, and then they'll open up rally points for the other neighborhoods to rally, and once they hit a threshold, they'll go there. So it's a little bit different than the initial rollout of Google in Kansas City, because they're established here already, but you'll see some similar features with the rallyhoods and events.
That does bring up another question, though. Meredith, what about our new facilities? You know, people, when they go into public facilities anymore, expect Wi-Fi access. Are we going to have maybe Google, or is that just going to be open to all of the providers to come to either of those locations?
So we haven't had that conversation yet, so I'm not sure how we'll move forward with that.
Well, if everybody signs up from Google, then Comcast and AT&amp;T, then they don't have any customers, and so we'll lose their revenue then, won't we?
Not necessarily. I think the providers have all kind of contributed. Hopefully, they'll bring their costs down. People will benefit by that.
They've all split the pie, then, to have ours best suits them.
Sure. Yeah. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
That concludes staff items, sir.
And I know we have an executive session item tonight. Do we move to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to go into...
Something brought up first before we go into executive session, an item at my mind. I just want to know what the status is on the city acquiring the cemetery. It's been sixty days, and I haven't heard any action. I want to know what's going on.
Staff continues to work on the pro forma. It's new to us, like it was a new proposal to the council, and so they are working on the business plan that would be associated with that to present to the council.
I guess what I'm saying is, I just want to hold your feet to the fire.
On that note, Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss litigation matters as authorized by our SMO six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsection one.
Second.
Much been made, and second, to move into executive session. Roll call?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Kellogg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach. Councilmember Hubach.
Do you want to go into executive session?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgoad.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrd.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead.
Yes.
Unanimous, sir.
All right. Let's go to executive session.